Good evening, everyone. With a quorum of members present, and the time having arrived, I will call the Finance Committee for Tuesday, June 11, 2019, to order. The first item on our agenda for tonight is the approval of the minutes of our previous meeting from 5:28 of 19, copies of which are in the packets. Any revisions necessary? If not, a motion to approve the minutes would be appropriate. Motion by Kelbock, second by Smith. Members in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None are opposed, the minutes are approved. Item number two is discussion on possible action regarding establishing the 2019 debt issuance calendar and borrowing levels and other related items. So Mary Ann's going to walk us through that because it's getting to be that time again.
Yep, so how we, I guess, start our planning is during the budget deliberations, looking at what projects that we have in the upcoming year, and that really establishes what we're going to bond or borrow for. And I have in my memo, what was included in the budget was $4.5 million for the fire station, $203,000 for the evidence storage building, a capital improvement of $2,606, tax increment District Number 6, which is basically Thomas Street and First Avenue of $3,009, and TID 8, which is First Avenue of $1,006. So through that process, we've had before you in 2019 some modifications that were required, and those are reflected in the modification, namely the fire station budget, if you recall. Both Council and Finance considered that. And then in TID 6 and TID 8 was the change for First Avenue. At our last meeting, not the last meeting, but in a previous meeting, I had disclosed that it looks like the evidence storage building was also under budgeted for construction costs today. Those bids will be coming in shortly, so before our process is complete, we will know the exact amount that is needed for that. But, you know, based on the engineer/architect's work, they're thinking about $500,000 is the budget needed for that facility. Then we looked at if we had any cash on hand that we could use to reduce that, and I think that about $874,000 would be available to offset some of that borrowing. And then when we looked at the fire station budget, if you recall the line item budget, there was a contingency built into the fire station budget, and there was furniture and equipment, things like that. And so what I'm proposing is that we hold off borrowing that in 2019, and then in 2020, we would borrow for the furniture and equipment, and we would issue 10-year debt on that, and we would wait to see if we needed the contingency. Because when I looked at the draw schedule that the construction manager provided, you know, we're not going to need all of our funds in 2019. So this would allow us to repay it quicker by doing a combination of a 20-year issue and a 10-year issue, and we wouldn't borrow any more than we needed. So if we don't need the contingency, we won't borrow for the contingency. So that is that adjustment of 421. So the revised plan then would be the $12,725,000. In addition to that, the water and sewer utility looked at their projects, and they're looking to borrow about $3.6 million for the water and about $6.3 million for the sewer. We are still working with our financial advisors just to finalize those numbers and the structuring of those. If we looked at the calendar, typically what happens is we do a preliminary resolution authorizing the sale, and then you have a second resolution on sale day.
Yes.
We typically take the preliminary resolution to a different council meeting than was considered by the Finance because of the rules. So if we looked at option one, but on sale day, we have to take it to Finance and Council on the same day.
Yes.
Because the bids have been open that morning, the bidders expect us to approve the sale on the same day because they've established their bid prices based on being able to go to the market immediately to try to sell our bonds. So if we, one option which would require the suspension of rules on that preliminary resolution would be to take them both to the first meeting in July, the preliminary resolution to Finance and Council, and then we would have our final sale on August 13. And that, again, goes to Finance and Council on the same day. If we followed our rules, we would take, Finance would consider the preliminary resolution on July 9, it would go to Council on August 13, and then the sale would occur on September 10.
Okay.
One other point, I've been working with our financial advisors, and we do think that we would have enough capacity in our debt service fund to retire our state trust fund loan early, meaning this year in 2019 in full. That is left over from when we purchased some of the business campus property.
Yeah.
And the interest rate is higher, so we had done state trust fund loan for the water and sewer utility and out in the business campus. We already refinanced the water and sewer, we left the business campus outstanding. If we refinanced, or not refinanced, just retired it, that's probably one of our highest interest rates. So they would prepare, our financial advisors would prepare a resolution to retire that debt early. And I guess that's all I've got. And I did prepare where we would be sitting if we borrowed the funds that are currently proposed. At the end of 2018, we were at $66 million in general obligation, $66,527, and we had anticipation debt out of $14,610,000, and revenue bonds of $15 million for a total of $96 million. At the end of 2019, with this plan, we would be at $69 million for our general obligation, the $14,610 on the anticipation, and $24 million for the water and revenue, a total of $108. Of course, we are only subject to the 5% rule on our general obligation, so you can see, at the end of 2018, we were at about 45% of our borrowing capacity. At the end of 2019, I would expect us to be at about 40, almost 47%, so still below the 50%.
Okay. And early payoff on the state trust fund loan is fantastic news.
Yep.
Is there an advantage, I mean, when we look at the debt issuance schedule, to take both items the same night and complete the entire process by mid-August versus September 10? Is there any advantage to expediting that schedule in terms of interest rates and when we hit the market? I know last year, we decided to wait.
That was a question I had.
Because a number of other municipalities were going to the market at the same time, and that floods the market, and then you have fewer people that want to buy your debt. So I guess, is there an advantage to one versus the other?
I guess, I think interest rates are really good right now, and, you know, they typically are in the summer, so I, you know, it's kind of a shot in the dark of when you hit the perfect interest rate. Our financial advisor didn't have a preference of one or the other. I always worry a little bit when our schedule is really short because that's only one month to, you know, we want any of the bidders to really have had time to look at our official statement, do all of those things. I do worry a little bit about option one being a little on the short side, but either, I think either one would work.
Well, I think that, I mean, with the difference being only four weeks, three and a half weeks, you know, if it was months, I think I'd be a little more nervous about interest rate fluctuation and things, just because there's a lot of volatility and just uncertainty out there. It seems like, you know, every time somebody at the national level says or does the wrong thing, there's all kinds of hiccups in all different markets and things and whatever. So I think that, you know, there's maybe option two for a pragmatic approach, which is what we've always done. You know, it gives ourselves time to prepare the packet, it gives, you know, us some time to, you know, like Mary Ann said, publish that for buyers. You know, I think if your comfort level with that is a little bit greater by having that little extra time, I mean, I certainly would be comfortable with that. What are your thoughts, committee? Would you want to go sooner or go on the normal schedule?
I'm inclined to, you know, go with the normal schedule and have the sale on 10th of September. I think, yeah, like, I agree, that gives, you know, purchasers plenty of time to read the prospectus, and I think that it still feels early enough that we're not competing with every other municipality, that's probably.
Last year, we were into October, weren't we?
Yeah.
Or even after that. I think it seemed like it was really late.
It was.
We waited, you know, for a few extra weeks.
We waited a long time, because, yeah, I think that was because of the water and sewer, wanted to do all of those at the same time.
Yeah, that, and then we found out a couple other communities were going to the market when we were planning to, and we thought, eh, maybe we better wait a few extra weeks and spread that out a little, and that seemed to work for us.
Well, I always vote for Mary Ann to be comfortable.
Me too. Because when she has heartburn, we have heartburn, so.
If she's got a comfort level, that's where I have a comfort level. My concern was, not that I ever want another additional meeting, but if we had another meeting in the summer, in the proper quantity of days, that, or if it was a special meeting in order to accommodate the, anyway, I may not be expressing my thoughts exactly how I'm thinking them, but since we don't have a meeting right there.
I feel like if there's no harm on September 10, that it seems like a safer choice. It's also a little bit more cautious approach, because that allows any of our public documents to be viewed by them as well. You know, and our posting schedule is the same, so if anybody wants to go online and read about what we're doing, there's certainly time to do that. I think anytime you have everything, you know, compacted into, you know, a week or two, you know, then I think everything feels rushed, and people feel like they're pushed and maybe didn't want to be. So I guess if we, you know, if we're all in agreement that we want to follow the option two schedule, it's not a resolution. I mean, you don't have to vote, but we could agree by consensus and direct Mary Ann accordingly.
So that's where we fit, start, and so we should do that, yeah.
Are we nodding for option two? We all seem like the normal schedule, September?
Okay.
Being the sale date? Okay, it looks like they're pretty.
And then, so the original, or the initial resolutions would reflect the borrowing plan then that we've outlined here.
Okay. Okay.
Super.
It's good that we got the amount down a little bit, too.
Yeah.
That helps, so, less is more with that sometimes, so.
Yep.
Excellent. Okay, that brings us to item number three, discussion on possible action on a parking space lease agreement with Compass Block 15 LLC for the rooftop of the Jefferson Street parking ramp.
So back in, I think it was 2015, Compass Properties had actually come before the Finance Committee regarding a similar lease. They were entertaining a tenant that was looking at that parking, and we, you guys approved the agreement, but then we never brought it to Council because that tenant didn't come to fruition. So now they've got a written agreement with the tenant, and they are interested in executing a contract. We already sell permits on the roof, as we discussed at the last meeting, for $5 per space, so it doesn't really offer them any specific discount. I think the only advantage here is that we are agreeing to lock it in to the term of the lease that they have, which is the three years, you know, given, the rooftop being what it is, and the fact that we've been, you know, establishing that lower rate. I don't really see that as a big concession for the city. I would expect that we probably will keep it at $5 for the next three years.
Right. Well, that, and then I think that, you know, us locking it in for a period of time gives some confidence to the prospective tenant that they're not going to see fluctuation and stuff like that, if that was what they, you know, originally lured them to the area was that parking rate and, you know, that particular location, because it's got a preferred rate versus some of the covered spaces. I think giving them that confidence for that short time certainly makes sense. What are your thoughts, committee? Okay, go ahead, Mike.
How many spaces are on the roof?
There's about 140, I think.
Okay.
Something like that.
So they'd be taking about half the space. Okay.
So, okay.
Question.
Go ahead, Dave.
Go ahead, Mr. Smith.
Oh, Dennis first, and then Dave. Go ahead.
Do we have the right at the end of the lease to take a look at it again and see if the rates need to be adjusted?
Yes. Let's see, where does it say that? Yeah, so at the end of the lease, we would have the right to modify the terms. It says that the lease shall be renewable for like terms for two additional five-year terms upon at least a 120-day notice. Prior to the end of the first lease term, the renewable rate shall be fair market value. So it would be, whatever we were charging would be the rate that we would.
That it would renew at, yes. So, okay. Okay, so with that, this one, we do have to vote on. Dave, go ahead.
Maybe someone could answer this. Was the rooftop at any time closed during this past winter for heavy snow, et cetera, and how are we removing, or do we have space that's dedicated for snow?
I believe we keep equipment right up there to plow snow so that we don't have to try to transport it. And then there is an area that they're doing snow storage.
Okay.
But if it came that we needed to create more space, I guess we would just put them down to the next level on a temporary basis.
Well, and I think if they absolutely had to, they could truck snow out of there with a smaller vehicle if they had to, you know, if there was a real, if we had a heavy year where things were really rough, they can truck snow out, they just prefer not to, but.
What assures us that those who are reserving up there are actually parking up there? What's the?
So currently, we have, because we have our old archaic system, what we did was we created special shaped permits for the rooftops so that the parking enforcement people, as they're driving through the ramp, can see they're round in shape, or oblong, but roundish, so I don't know what that, I forgot my geometry, or whatever it's called. But anyhow, so they can just view and see if there's a rooftop permit or in a lower level. But once we get our new parking enforcement system set up, they will know, the computer will know this license plate belongs on this level of the ramp, and the LPR, the license plate recognition software, can actually tell when they're going from level to level. So it has some sort of height thing that it knows.
Censor stuff, you know, that knows where it's at? Okay.
So it will know that it's on the top level, and it will know to look at this permit list and compare it to those license plates.
Okay, thank you.
So it's pretty sophisticated.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
What if a person has two cars, or he has a loaner car, and he drives it to work one day because his car's in the shop?
So you can enter more than one license plate in the system, and it knows that if it sees one plate, that's okay, but if it sees both plates at the same time, then...
That it's not.
It's a violation. And people would be able to add temporarily if they had something in the shop, or they would be able to.
Or a new car, or whatever, they would just adjust whatever was.
Yes.
Okay. Okay, so with that, on this first one, because we have another item for them next, but on this first one, do we have a motion then to approve that three-year rate lock at the $5? Motion by Martins, is there a second? Second by Nutting. Further discussion or questions? Seeing none, members in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None are opposed, that motion carries. So item number four is discussion on possible action on parking space lease agreement with Compass Block 15 LLC for the McClellan and Jefferson Street parking ramps. And this must be all the other levels that they occupy, so, or may occupy.
Yeah, and I think most of their parking right now is in the McClellan ramp, but this is an extension of an agreement that's expiring on July 31, and basically, it's the same agreement, though we've imposed new rates, and these are the same rates that Wifely approved and UMR. So we will basically have all of our long-term parkers now on the same rate schedule, and the goal was to get them closer to fair market value. So you can see, they were at a rate of 27, they would go up to 29, and then fair market value.
Okay. All right. Committee members, any thoughts?
Oh, excuse me, 29, then 32, then fair market value.
All right, and Marcus here from Compass. Do you have any comments that you want to add tonight, Mark, or no? He does not. Okay, committee members, any questions? If not, is there a motion then to approve the agreement? Motion by Nutting, is there a second? Second by Kelbock. Further discussion or questions? Mr. Mayor?
I'm just curious as far as what the fiscal impact will be. I'll wait till after the vote. It's not listed.
Oh. We'll have to calculate it before Council if we have it on for Council tonight.
I will.
So, okay, we'll get you that. With a motion and a second, then, on the floor, members in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None are opposed, that motion carries as well. Item number five is discussion on possible action regarding a resolution demanding legislators include cities in the new transportation aid proposal. And, you know, I don't know if you followed your either capital I or capital Z report from the League, but last week, some new legislation was introduced down in Madison from our local, one of our local representatives has also signed on to the bill to provide some one-time transportation aid infusion to address roads. And we've got Public Works Director Lindman coming up to talk to us about that, I would say, within the last month or two. The mayor met with our local representatives from Madison to indicate to them that we need help on infrastructure, and it seemed that they all heard him. And then when they went back and proposed the original incantation of this agreement, it was including townships and counties, but not cities and villages. And yet, townships and counties can enact wheel tax, in fact, some already have. We are not getting any wheel tax, but we also then were originally targeted to not get any of this money either. And so we found that a little bit appalling, and so the mayor sent out an email to those folks saying, you know, hey, I thought we talked about this, and, you know, I don't know to what end, but Mary Ann also...
It was a little more direct than that.
It was pretty direct, so I'm paraphrasing, but...
And we had talked with them several times, Mr. Lindman was in those meetings with me, as well as being in Madison almost three weeks ago, talking about the very same issue, so.
It needed, what you said needed to get said, and Mary Ann also contacted Jerry Petrowski and talked with him about the fact that, you know, cities matter, too, and that we also are his constituents. And so, you know, I think that there's been some revision to the proposal to add some small amounts for cities, but it's still, you know, I guess I'll let Eric walk us through it, it's kind of a drop in the bucket based on what our needs are, so, welcome.
Yeah, thank you. So I guess we looked at this a little bit, and like Lisa had said, they proved through their finance $130 million, but it was strictly allocated for towns and counties. Cities and villages incorporated areas were excluded from that. The following day, I think, there was an additional money that was allocated, $90 million, that it was actually local road improvement add-on to the, what was already going to be allocated. That was $90 million, with $22 million of it going to cities and villages, the rest of it going back to towns and counties. So there was a, so over the couple of days, there was an approval of $220 million towards roadways. Cities received $22 million of that, which is poor. And so I think we were kind of put back, as the mayor and Lisa said, I was in several meetings with the mayor, the senators, along with other representatives, and infrastructure was always the number one and number two topic with them for this city, and I know that other representatives, it's the same way. So in my opinion, these are very poor decisions, getting 10% of the total allocation, and I think that, you know, the resolution needs to be strong, it needs to voice our concerns with that, and also state to the representatives they're not representing, you know, some of the largest tax bases within the state, so.
That, and, you know, even with some of the funding that was restored for cities, I know we had talked about that a little bit last week, is that fund is competitive. And so cities with the same needs we have, we are all going to compete for that money. And historically, the funds that we've been able to secure for our projects from that fund source is usually fairly small. I mean, often, you get enough to do a street, you may get enough to do a block or two, not a mile or two, and so if this is more of the same, you know, they could hand out all this money, and we have enough to pave a block or two, at best. And so we had talked about the Finance Committee and the Council, because we all know how we grapple with infrastructure and state aid for transportation funding, which has been a problem for years. We are struggling, and we're borrowing more and more and more at the municipal level, and we're budgeting more and more for infrastructure without a whole lot of help, you know, from Madison. And so this resolution, if we pass this tonight and the Council does, would be sent down there to remind them that cities and villages matter. And, you know, just recently, a group of public safety officials came together to denote that poor infrastructure is a hazard to public safety, and sent that down to Madison, you know, saying that, you know, emergency response can't happen when your roads, you know, look like a war zone. And so, I mean, it can happen, but not efficiently. And so hopefully, all of these messages converging will have some effect, but I think that's what we're looking for tonight, is that if we and the Council pass it, that, you know, we'd send a clear message that we need help, and we need a little more help than where they've started so far, so.
I guess one thing, just to kind of put it in perspective, when we look at the counties and the rural roads, typically when they redo a road, they do a mill, they'll go down, they'll mill up the blacktop and then put new blacktop down, they might have some culverts or something. Typically, they do their roads for $220,000, $250,000 a mile for a two-lane road. It costs us about $950,000 a mile in the city, curb, gutter, sidewalks, storm sewer. We're about four and a half times the cost, but we're only getting about 10% of the money. So there's a significant difference, and maybe we need to do a better job of educating on that as well, so.
We do, and I think it helps if we all speak with one voice, and I think through this resolution, we certainly can do that. I mean, we've done that on issues of state concern before, and, you know, it's been moderately effective, but I think that it makes sense that we would at least make our opinion known to those that need to hear it. So what are your thoughts, committee? Go ahead, Dave.
My assumption is that we are voicing our concerns along with other cities that Mr. Petrowski and his cohorts are representing.
That's correct. Actually, we had a MPO Technical Advisory Committee meeting today, and everyone that represented in the MPO had contacted the senators, so they are on the same route we are with voicing their concerns very directly, so.
I mean, the fact that they have an eye on infrastructure is a plus, but the way they're allocating it is not quite a plus, so that's where we need some adjustments to be made.
Did he give an explanation?
I have not heard from the senator, so I have not received one.
Okay. So with that, do we have a motion to approve the resolution that then would also go to Council tonight? Motion by Nutting, is there a second? Second by Smith. Members in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None are opposed, that motion carries, and then Council will also act on that one tonight. Hopefully, we can get that sent down shortly then. Okay, so item number six is discussion on possible action on approving a conveyance of land from 212 East Thomas Street to 216 East Thomas Street. And let me shift my packet here, get over to the Thomas Street item. Sometimes it's easier to do this on paper. Okay, so you have that information in your packet. Anybody have questions for Eric on that conveyance? There is no fiscal impact on that one.
This is just excess land that's being moved to accommodate or add to another property.
It's an adjacent property that one of the owners that's staying there, they wanted some additional property to put in the additional driveway, so, yes.
And that would give them the strip that they want?
Yes.
Okay, so do we have a motion to accept that?
Move to approve, please.
Motion to approve from Nutting, second by Kelbock. Members in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None are opposed, that motion carries as well. And we have a similar item next, discussion on possible action on approving a conveyance of land from 237 East Thomas Street to 235 East Thomas Street, kind of the same deal.
Move to approve.
Motion by Nutting, do we have a second? Second by Smith. Further discussion? Seeing none, members in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None are opposed, that motion carries as well. Item number eight, discussion on possible action on agreement for purchase for Phase Two of the Thomas Street Reconstruction Project, Parcel 17, 1007 South First Avenue, and Parcel 18, 136 West Thomas Street. And so we've got some info in the packets on that one as well, and you've got a map in there as well. Let me just... Let me just flip over. The fiscal impact on these two is fifteen thousand, three hundred and fifty dollars. Does anyone have questions for Eric on this one? If not, is there a motion to approve? Motion by Kelbach, is there a second? Second by Martins. Further discussion or questions? Seeing none, members in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? None are opposed? That motion carries. And that, let me see, that brings us to the financial reports, which is item number nine, discussion and possible action regarding the April General Fund Financial Report. And you've got that report in the packets. I guess Mary Ann will walk us through it just a little bit and hit the high points. And we've made fantastic time tonight. Usually, we're rushing, and this ends up being the item we hold, so.
So as far as revenues are concerned, I think the, the big changes that I wanted to point out is permit revenue, again, is doing very well. We are actually ahead of 2018, which, if you recall, 2018 was an extremely good year for us. And the other bright star is our investment income. We have already exceeded budget in that area, and we are substantially over 2018. So I don't expect us to have any problems in the revenue area this year when we finish out the year. From an expense standpoint, the theme so far this year has been winter maintenance. You know, we've, Bobby put in there a chart of snow, so you can really see the impact of snow to 2018 versus 2019. He put in there that he's not hoping for a white Christmas this year. I said, well, let's say a white Christmas, but just two days before Christmas.
One day, one or two days, yeah.
But he left it there. Bah humbug. But anyhow, I do like a little snow for Christmas. So expense-wise, besides our snow removal budget, I think everything is looking great. You know, oftentimes, we have some timing, like if you look at Parks and Rec, Parks, at the end of April was only four sixty-one versus last year's six seventy-two. That's just when they get around to billing us, so they incur all of the expenses over at the county, and then they bill us monthly. So, you know, we could have paid, you know, that month in May. So it's not that we're saving a ton of money, it's just the billing. But otherwise, I think everything looks good from, in all of the other expense categories in the general fund. It's really just keeping our eye on the snow removal costs. But again, from an overall standpoint, I think the year is shaping up early, as it may be, to be a good one.
Good deal. All right. So we'll place her report on file, unless anyone has questions for her on the report. Go ahead, Mike.
All right, yeah, just one quick question. Well, it's good to hear that the permits, you know, collections way up, because that's a sure sign of a strong economy. But I do have a little bit of concern about the snow removal budget, especially since we're sitting at fifty-eight thousand dollars for the rest of the year, and I don't think that's, that's more than enough to probably clear a dusting off the streets. So are there any thoughts or plans that, where to allocate resources in case we get, say, a Thanksgiving dumper?
So one option would be to, I can take a look at the budget and see, you know, would we want to increase the budget for investment income to reflect that, what we, you know, closer, and then increase that budget for snow removal to add to it. We could certainly look to see if we have any vacancies within other departments, or actually, oftentimes, the things that are, I guess, saving graces in the budget are vacancies, prolonged vacancies. And then oftentimes, Public Works will do work for other departments, or a tax increment district, for example, when they were tearing down a lot of the buildings on Thomas Street, those expenses then went to the Thomas Street budget outside the general fund. I know we hired a demolition contractor this year due to, you know, limited staffing and a limited time where we needed them taken down right away. So besides vacancies, I don't really know what would provide us with some big savings.
If we had project savings, you know, and I, I guess I say that lightly, because, you know, we certainly don't want to repurpose money that we have borrowed for capital projects, because you are not supposed to fund your expenses with that. But if we have project savings from other areas where we have funded some of those projects with local funds or cash on hand, and they come in a little bit under, would it be possible to use some of that surplus?
As long as it wasn't debt proceeds, because we can't use debt proceeds for operations. But if it was a non, if it was, you know, to be budgeted out of the levy, we certainly could do that.
Okay, so that may be something else we could look at down the line and see, see where we go.
I can work on that for the next meeting to see.
Okay.
We'll keep our, we'll keep our fingers crossed, but it's, it's good, it's good to see if there's a plan.
We won't quite wish for a brown Christmas yet. We'll have maybe two days of snow. I guess if we could get a anticlimactic November and December, we might make it, but the odds of that are pretty slim. I mean, you just, it's rare if you get by and you have Thanksgiving and Christmas with nothing to clean up. So that said, the other thing that I would like us to keep our eye on for the end of the summer, you know, we've started swimming pool season, and swimming pool season kicked itself off with Free Pool Day. I talked with one of our pool folks yesterday and found out that it was a hot day. They were at capacity and they were free. They had waiting lines, and they turned some people away, so people are using our pools. Obviously, that's what we want. But they are likely expecting that on those days, they're going to have some overtime and, you know, additional expense for chemicals and things like that. And so at the end of the summer, I want to make sure that we have a report in this committee of what the budget impact of Free Pool Days has been, once we have a full summer of it under our belts, because we were skeptical about that. And the person I talked to said that what they thought would happen is already happening in the first week. People are inundating the pools on free day, and on the other days, they are kind of dead. And so, you know, if you have a free day, they will not necessarily want to come on the fee day. So if that's what's happening, we need an analysis of that. And so at the end of the summer, when they're done, at the end of August, I would like some firm numbers on what the real impact of free days has been.
I agree.